Athens Grafton Joint Contract School District Meeting at 6:33. Okay, are there any adjustments to the agenda? There will be an executive session. There will be an executive session, yes. Any other adjustments to the agenda?
Is the superintendent going to be here?
He's in Mount Villiers tonight.
Okay. All right. Review and approve the board budget and joint minutes of November 8th and 15th and December 3rd attached. Do I have a motion to do so?
I move that we...
All right, well Jessa did.
Okay.
Okay. Is there any discussion on those minutes? Anybody got any corrections that they saw? No? Is there any objection to approving the minutes? There being no objection, the minutes are approved. There is no public, have a public communication comment?
Why?
Cool. Yeah, me too. I am a little bit. Okay, Assistant Superintendent Superintendent's report.
I believe it's included in your packet.
It was.
And so you could see that we are working on, I am working on a consolidated federal grant, and that is all told about $2 million. So it is all amended. It was originally approved. It took a long time to get it approved. It is now amended and it's about this far away from getting submitted. And with that money, that will impact Athens Grafton specifically. You'd be getting some LLI kits, and that's Level of Literacy Intervention Kits from Fontis and Penau, and that is for our interventionists to use, but it's also a great resource for teachers. We're looking at somewhere around $15,000 to get what Athens Grafton needs because they just are a little low, a little shy on resources. But these are essentially resources for interventions for our children that struggle, but they will also be for all the kids. We also have money in there for professional development. Our literacy consultant was here today and Tuesday and working with our teachers and really, I think, making some, you know...
Yeah.
Making a lot of progress and just opening up some different ways of looking how children struggle. What is, how are they processing the words on the page? Every child processes differently, and children that can't get it in the classroom, that it just doesn't come easily, there's some kind of, some kind of process they're not getting, and we need to find out where that, that gap is, where that problem is, and it's a different issue for each child. So we talked about personalized education, where the way we teach reading and interventions is working with them individually, doing running records and finding out what kinds of mistakes they're making. And those mistakes, we turn those into strategies to teach them to overcome them. So we're very excited about that. We have a diversity committee going on, and we actually came up with a vision and a mission, and that's in here. Today, we have wellness committee. We're looking over at our wellness policy, and it's already, it's about a year old. It was a year old in May, so the school boards approved it. So now it's our time to look after the first year, how well are we doing towards it? We went through the nutrition piece today. Next month, we will be looking at the physical activity piece, and then we will be looking the following month at our health education piece. One thing that's come up from the AOE and the state health department is vaping is a very, it's almost crisis level. It is so widely used by kids now. They, the Jules, they look like thumb drives, only a little bit longer. They're very small, very thin, very slim line, and we have a lot of students that are using those. Everywhere, it's wrapped it. They get these little pods. The problem is, it's almost twice the nicotine that they get from cigarettes, and they can do it in the class, you don't even know they're doing it because you can't really see it. And it doesn't make any smoke or any vape, vapor, and you can plug it in your computer and, and they can also put THC in it. So it's a real problem, and we're working together with Greater Falls Community Connections to really bring that education forward, not just to the middle and high school. We're going to start, not with the tobacco grant, people at work in District Michelle Harrington and Heather Worries, and we're going to start at our elementary schools as well, 55 and 6, and just exposing them to what it looks like, why they shouldn't do it, just helping them understand that this is not cool, even though it smells like cotton candy, it's not okay. So we've been working on that, and again, you know, Chris is pretty consumed with Act 46. He is up at the state now. Monday, he is going to be up there all day. He's staying over at the state. He was there today, he's there tomorrow, and then on Monday, it's all about Act 46. I'm assuming or thinking, and I could be wrong, that the, they're going to file probably soon, sooner than we think. And this is going to, you know, we're just going to wait and see what happens and how it's going to impact us. Meanwhile, we are going to, for all intents and purposes, go ahead with what we have to do legally while we're also doing the other pieces to make sure that it doesn't happen. And he's the one that can really speak to the Act 46. I'm on top of everything else, but Act 46 is not my, he's already done Act 46, and he's the expert. So, and we also, you could see with the curriculum director, she is now going through the schools and looking in classrooms and seeing what we're doing. Special education, they're getting a lot of referrals, which takes time, and they have only 45 days to do them, and the testing is quite intensive. So they're very, very busy. Edie is really spending her time going through that universal chart of accounts, so that means she's changing everything from what we're used to into what the state now wants. And it's, again, very time consuming. We're all just bleary eyed, and Harley is working really hard on the nutrition services. We're waiting to see if we want a grant for the middle school, for a new oven and a new stove top. And Ricky is going through, he has done a lot with the data collection for the state from the technology piece. We also have iXL. Grafton is one of the luckier schools because they had iXL to begin with in math. We've used grant money to get iXL through the whole district in ELA and math. And iXL is a great computer program. It's very intuitive, easy to use, and it helps students practice math by grade, by standard, and it helps them with ELA, English or Language Arts, by grade, by standard. Teachers can use it for station in their class. Special education teachers can use it to help the kids practice. We can use it after school. We can use it during the summer for summer school. Kids can do it at home. Eventually, it'll be their own Google sign-in, which, their own Google email address that they use at school. So this is something we got from the grant, and we're pretty excited about having this, especially across the district, so the teachers, when they meet, they can talk the same language. So that's pretty much what we're up to. It's just really busy, as, you know, you're all busy. We all know that. I come once a week to visit the school and work with Liz. Liz is doing a great job. She's got foundations and, well, I won't take over yours.
That's okay.
So we're really excited about foundations, and I'll let her talk about that.
Okay, Principal's report.
Yeah, we, yeah. We have foundations as a phonics program currently being used K-2. We purchased the Little 3, which I'm looking into getting our 3-4 teacher training in the program before we start implementation, so probably start implementation. I'm thinking next year, by the time we get training in, but we have the material, so that is the bigger portion because they're fairly pricey. They're not, they're not super consumable, so the great thing is the bulk of the purchase is bought, you know, it's not a lot of upkeep. We...
It also does handwriting...
Oh, yes.
Spelling, these components, and in kindergarten, it does printing, and it does all those vowels and the letter sounds.
Yeah.
But as you get up into third grade, then you switch over and it teaches handwriting, cursive, and it has spelling...
Yeah, the suffixes, the affixes, the homophones, homonyms, different spelling rules that you need to move forward so that when they're attacking multi-syllabic unfamiliar words when they're in high school, in biology class, they're able to decode. And that's kind of where the reading falls apart when they enter the multi-syllabic and their unfamiliar content, then that's where these reading skills will be helpful. So currently, we have 59 students. We have 30 Athens and 29 Grafton. We have 36 7th and 8th graders, 18 from both communities. So we had our holiday bizarre today. Our 3rd and 4th grade classroom put on the holiday bizarre for the whole school. Community members donated all sorts of wonderful gifts and wrapping, and classes took turns coming to the gym and picking out a bunch of presents for their families and friends, and then community members also wrapped the presents, so everyone in the school went home with a big box of wrapped gifts for their families. It was a great, great morning. We also have a community service group here that meets once a week after school, and they put on, for the first time this year, something called Game Quest. So they asked students bring in $2 apiece, and then they put on various games throughout the building, outside and inside, all put on by this after-school program, this group of, I think, 5th and 6th graders. And they are looking to use the money that they earned to do something with the school. They're not sure. They're going to, still thinking about what to use their profit for, but they want to add something to the school, so we're thinking about that. We'll be welcoming the Vermont Symphony Orchestra in January. They're going to be coming, a brass ensemble will be coming and performing for the whole school on the 4th, January 4th, and around 12:30. Winter sports will start January 9th. So we're offering downhill skiing at Stratton, cross-country at Grafton Trails, and then keen ice, you can ice skate. So it'll go on Wednesdays in January and February, even the beginning of March, I believe, first weekend, week of March. Our winter concert will be held on January 24th, so we're getting ready for that. It's going to be a world fair, so each classroom is taking on a country to learn, so we're incorporating all the literacy standards, and then families are going to be invited to tour the world at Grafton, and then our music teacher is implementing all different school songs from the countries in her music lessons, so they'll be performing those at night. And we're hoping to get food services out to provide small refreshments from each country, so we'll see if that works. Also, last time you asked for the breakfast and lunch percentages comparison is how our lunch program is going, and for the past three months compared to last year, a higher percentage of students are eating breakfast and lunch here in school consistently since September. So most recent November last year, about 49% of the students were having lunch, opposed to this November, 63%. So I have more numbers if you want to look at them, but across the board, it's generally...
What about purchased meals?
Purchased meals?
By staff and whatnot. Are you tracking that?
I don't have the staff numbers, no. I can look into that.
Yeah, the only reason is that that's revenue stream for that program, and I'd be interested to see if we're meeting our projections for, for, for that revenue stream, because that's...
Oh, I have the paid lunches. I have those numbers.
Well, no, because paid lunches can be kids also. I'm just, I was just curious more on...
The adult side?
On the adult side.
I'll look into it.
Yeah, because that's...
I think Westminster definitely gets more of them just because they host more meetings than we do out here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I understand that, I'm just, I was just curious, that's the acceptance level, that's all. Okay, cool.
Great, thank you.
Anything else?
I don't think so.
Nice.
I mean, the last time we met was before Thanksgiving, so we did have our Thanksgiving feast, which was a huge success, and we had roughly 200 guests.
Considering the weather was kind of dicey.
Yes, yes, it was dicey. We also are going to be able to call school differently in Grafton.
Oh, that's a good point.
Yeah, a few weeks ago, when we had that storm in Grafton, but none of the other towns seemed to get as affected, and we only had about 20 kids in school that day. The superintendent and I discussed how sometimes Grafton's weather is quite different than Bellows Falls, so I have gotten in touch with the town garage in Athens and the town garage in Grafton.
You only had 20 kids in school?
Mm-hmm.
It was a two-hour delay.
But, but you only had 20 show up?
Mm-hmm.
That's not a day, then. You have to have 50% of your children show up.
Well, because the buses stopped running, so it was considered an excused absence because they took...
Okay, gotcha. All right, I'll check.
The buses said they couldn't go in, and then the town garage called and said they actually took the town crews off the road because so many trees were falling that it became a danger.
Okay, cool.
So, yeah, I contacted the Athens town garage and the Grafton town garage, and we'll be able to call them, I will be able to call them in the morning and talk with Chris Pratt.
And then you have a separate robo-call out?
He, Chris will do the robo-call, but it will be separate then.
It will be separate for the Athens...
Or then by, in the call itself, however he...
All right.
It could be separate than the other towns in the SU.
Good enough. And then the SU will, will post also if there's a difference on their website.
The notification will out.
Yeah.
All right, cool. Great, that's a big one for us.
Yeah.
Outstanding. That was a really good one that you thought about.
Yeah.
All these years, we never did.
Yeah, right.
Well, all these years, we've had transportation consolidated, which is probably, what, five or so, so it's not that long. Okay, great. All right, and I guess Lynn kind of touched on Edie's stuff. Yeah, so there's really nothing there on the financial.
We did want to, yeah, we did want to talk a little bit, and I'm going to actually have Liz take care of this. This is our summer school and our after-school program in our Halt Grant. So the Halt Grant was for $10,230.
That is the Halt Grant and the Wyndham Foundation donation.
So that was donated for summer school. We ended up using...
So what happened was, when they applied for the Halt Grant, they had to estimate how much salaries were going to be, and they underestimated, so we ended up having to pay for more money in salaries. But if you look at the items within the Halt Grant, there's salaries, there's materials, there's field trips, there's snacks. We didn't use some of the other budget lines. We, they went on field trips this summer, but we didn't take it out of our budget line. They took it out of a different line. So what we are left with is more money in our Halt Grant to use this year, so...
So you can roll it over for...
Or we can use it this summer.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so we can roll it over, yeah.
Can we use it this summer since it's not going to be Grafton?
I am not sure, but she has a plan.
Well, what I would like to use, we, for the past 10 years, we've had a Girls in the Run program here. Girls in the Run program is a program for girls, grades 3 through 5. It's about self-esteem, positive self-image. It's a fantastic program, nonprofit, it's international. It culminates with a 5K. I'm not sure, I think this school probably uses the one in Brattleboro, which is fant... Everyone wears the number one, it's untimed. It is $100 for each child to participate in the program. What I was hoping to do is using, use the remainder of what's in the Halt Grant to sponsor students who would like to participate but would be unable to because of the $100.
Money is, belongs to whom?
It's through the Halt Grant.
No, no.
School of Athgraph.
Athgraph.
Yes.
Okay, I just want to, I just want to, I just want to understand. So the money is Athgraph. You're talking about how much money? I just, I just want to make, I just want to make sure that we don't need a motion to do this.
Oh, it's 14, it's $1,426.
That should be okay within your discretionary budgetary. I just want to make sure we don't need a motion to move that money around. I don't think we do, but since, we may want to check on that.
Okay.
Okay? So Lynn, could you just validate?
Certainly.
Because if we need a motion to, for you to do that, then we have to put that on the agenda.
Okay.
Have it over to court.
So a couple of other things that Edie has said is, for Athens, the budget you have for tuition is 315, and the anticipated expenditure, without any changes, is right now 318. So you are going to be shy $3,000.
Yep.
And then EST 504 services for 7-8. Since the budget was created, there was a change of services for a student at priority placements. We expect to expend $62,825 out of that line, but we need to, we need to hold on that because I'm not sure that that is going to come to fruition. Liz and I are working on that placement, that 504 right now. It is a 7th grader. Grafton, your budget for tuition 7-8 is $285,000, and without any changes, right now, you're up to $238 until the end of the year because we just had a student move out of district. So you're 47 in savings, and then...
So I make a motion, we borrow $3,000.
And then on line 103...
You can't borrow from us because you can't borrow from Athgraph.
That's right.
We've done that before.
Done that before.
On line 103, there is a change, but that is for, we talked about that earlier, Admit Health Insurance.
Okay.
So there we go, thank you.
Cool, that's good. Okay, unfinished business for this, any questions? Okay, good. Unfinished business for discussion, action. Follow-up to Act 46 merger, joint board meeting with Westminster. That should not have been on this agenda because each, for anything having to do with Act 46, each individual town has to address the issue, and there is no action that can come out of this board regarding Act 46. We can't have any discussions, though, I mean, I can tell, we can bring the Athens people up to date, but then they can bring us up to date, which is basically going to be, we had a meeting, we went into executive session, and we addressed the issues that we discussed at the joint meeting.
Ditto.
And that's, and that's about what we can tell everybody about right now.
Ditto, that's it.
Ditto. Okay, cool. And it says litigation here. I'm not 100% sure with that. If that relates to Act 46, again, it doesn't belong on this agenda, and litigation discussions are usually held in executive session anyway.
Mm-hmm.
And each of the boards at their meetings would have said yes, would have, would have done whatever they had to do with the litigation.
Yep.
Okay, V S B A, I, do you have something on that, Lynn, to understand why that's on the, on the agenda?
I think when we're talking about, we had decided earlier to withhold the dues.
To do, yes.
And are we still on that thought?
Yep.
So we're going to keep it on here until we decide. We're just withholding it.
Right, okay. Gotcha. Okay, that's just a holding pattern.
Yeah.
FY '20 budget for the one person who wasn't at the budget meeting, and for the cameras who weren't here for the budget meeting, the budget, the Athgraph budget looks very good this year. It looks to be a 4% reduction from the, an actual reduction in the budget spend from last year, which is really great. First time we had that happen. There's a few other minor points that need to be adjusted and looked at, but barring anything coming into that budget that's crazy, we should be able to approve it at our next meeting, which it needs to be warned for approval for our next, for our January meeting.
What are we warning?
Budget approval.
To approve the budgets.
Oh, definitely, yes.
And it's got to be, so there, there need to be three warnings.
Yep.
One for each town and for the Athgraph, so that everybody can approve their budgets.
Yep.
Will do.
They both, they look very good for the upcoming year, and tuitions appear to be flat, which is excellent, so barring anything weird, not that anything weird is going on with taxes or anything, but if we had the assumption that things would remain as is, it would look very good. It should look good. There's a bunch of other stuff, and hopefully, do we have, we have another budget meeting scheduled before our next board meeting? I'm not 100% sure. We probably should because we don't have any, we, we need, we need all the tax information, which Edie won't have until afterwards, and also, we need to approve the SU budget on the 19th at an S, I assume, we're having an SU meeting also on the 19th besides the joint boards? Because we, is that correct?
I don't think it's an SU, I think it's an SU...
We need an SU meeting.
Yeah, we're having the SU.
Right.
Yeah, it's...
It was talk of changing the SU from the 26th to the 19th.
To 19th, yeah.
I never heard finalized.
It's been warned.
So that's in connection with the joint meeting, right?
Well, it would be separate.
Be the joint meeting, then the SU meeting afterwards or something?
Budget is not on there.
On what, on the agenda?
On the SU agenda for the 19th.
Is, so there's an SU meeting on the 19th? Is there another, okay. I think we'll have to square out all those meetings, right?
Yeah.
Because the SU budget needs to be approved before our budgets, our budgets can be approved.
Okay, so I'm going to ask him that. I asked about the litigation, and he says he doesn't know. David must have put that on because it's pending maybe?
Yeah.
So I wasn't just keeping that open.
Oh, okay.
And I will ask about the budget.
Yeah, because it's just the way that it has to work. We can't approve our budgets until we know what the SU budget is, because you have to set, set our assessment based upon the SU budget. Okay, just matters...
Yeah, it's not warned for the SU budget, or for the SU meeting.
So then we, I mean, theoretically, we could call a special meeting.
I'm wondering if they're having a budget meeting before the joint.
I don't know, usually that's attached to the...
Yeah, it sounds like we're a little screwed up on...
It's just got the joint, there is an agenda for the joint meeting.
Yeah, and there's...
But there's...
Yeah, and there should be, we should have a budget meeting once that SU meeting is done, just to look at the tax sheets, which will be after the 1st of the year also. Because we need, we need, we need to look at the tax sheets just to understand the, the impact. But I know Edie won't have the tax information until right at the end of December.
And so if you were to pick a day, you want this before your January meeting, your budget approval?
Well, it has to be.
Okay.
But that's, that's the way we've done it every year. Edie, I mean, Edie knows this, so it's not, it's just...
I'll take care of that.
That's, that's really at, at the SU level.
Thank you.
Okay, cool. But yeah, our budgets are looking pretty good right now. I think that's the best way to put it. For the camera, everything's looking good. Looking good.
For now.
Okay, for now. Any other new business for discussion that we can think of? There are no warrants and no warrant discussion. Any appointments and resignations that we're aware of? No, that's always good. Directors' comments?
Yeah, I have one thing I wanted to ask about is the Athens school. With everything going on, can the Athgraph, the joint Athgraph make a decision whether to give that back to the town for a dollar? How does that work? Because...
No, first of all, it doesn't belong to Athgraph. It belongs to Athens.
Okay.
Okay. Secondly, that $1 thing is part of those terms of agreement, okay? When, and you can do, do the investigation on it. When we looked last time, you can't, we couldn't do the $1 thing. We had to sell it at market value. That's the way the current, as I, as we understood it at the time when we tried to sell it to Athens, we had to sell it at current market value. We couldn't just bequeath the building to the town. If the terms of agreement are, are signed by the towns and the merger occurs, then it could be given to the town of Athens for $1. Okay? That's as I understand it right now.
And don't we have to pay a percentage of what the loan was when we built it, I think?
You actually owe, you actually owe Athgraph money on it because, for, yeah, if, if it reverts out of Athgraph and, and...
It's a certain percentage.
Yeah, yeah, you have to do, for all the maintenance that's been put into it. It's, it's a pretty complex formula as opposed to just giving it away for a buck.
Yeah.
So I would not attempt to take any action on that until we get, until we get further into what's happening with the Act 46 merger. That would be my recommendation. However, as I've said many times before, I am not a lawyer. If you wanted to nail it further, I would say Athens would need to engage the services of someone who might understand this a little bit better. So that's, yeah, yeah. But no, you can't slip it in there before that anything happens. Nice, I tried, but I don't think it'll play.
Yeah, okay.
Legally.
Just puts the town in a bit of a bind, because we were, this was supposed to all be done by March, the, the joining of the two, so that then the town could, we could present that as a possibility for a town office.
Because they want to move the town office from the little one to the school.
Well, it still may, something still may be available to happen before March, okay? That's, we, we just, we just don't know right now.
I'm just trying to figure out how all of this...
Yep, gotcha. Okay. Any other directors' comments, June?
I'm fine, thanks.
Jessa? Okay, date of our next meeting is January 10th, 2019. We need to probably schedule a budget meeting prior to. I have no more additional agenda items for the next board meeting. I have no more additional agenda items for the next board meeting. There being no objection, I would like us to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing sensitive information relating to an engagement suit about Act 46, the knowledge of which to the general public would, what's, what's the exact terminology?
Commercial public disclosure, which would place the board at a significant disadvantage.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, and so we are now-
Probably type that once a week though, don't they?
Yeah. Now Westminster probably types it every other day. Anyway, that was, that was meant nicely. Because they're leading the charge, God bless them. There being no objection, then we are going to go into the executive session, board members only.